Okay. The work session for November 26, 2024 is called Order. Obviously, I'm not Councilman Potoka. Councilman Potoka is joining us remotely. Good to see you, Councilman Potoka.
Good to be here.
Thank you. So, welcome, everyone. Okay, so we're going to begin with calling those people who have testified from the public on various bills and resolutions. Ms. Bel Castro, I understand we have five speakers, correct?
You're speaking of Bill 98.
Okay, we can do that, yes.
That's the first bill that you're calling, Bill 98?
Yes, Bill 98.
Yes.
Okay. Bill 9824 is a bill that I am sponsoring, which would expand a local property tax credit for disabled Baltimore County law enforcement officials and certain Maryland state troopers to Maryland Transportation Authority police officers who were disabled through their employment as an MDTA police officer. Any comments from my colleagues?
Happy to co-sponsor with you, Councilman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Bel Castro, first speaker.
Our first speaker is Raymond Mikowski. Mr. Mikowski, you're on. As a panelist, you may begin your testimony after you unmute yourself. Are you there, sir?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. You can begin your testimony.
Okay, yeah, my name is Raymond Mikowski, and I was injured in the line of duty while handling a warehouse fire in Baltimore County. I never thought my career as a police officer would end so abruptly on that night. I had a fall and ended up with a torn rotator cuff and a cracked socket joint that couldn't be repaired. I was eventually forced into retirement by the MDTA police due to my permanent disability and my right shoulder arm. Since my retirement, things haven't been easy with day-to-day living. This bill would definitely help me and my family with day-to-day living and support, and I kindly ask for your support in passing this bill. And again, thank you so much for hearing what I have to say today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mikowski, and thank you very much for your service and sacrifice. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mikowski. Okay, next speaker is Chris.
Next speaker is Jim Krasinski.
Very good. Mr. Krasinski, good to see you.
Mr. Krasinski, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, members of the council. It's good to see you again. My name is Jim Krasinski, and I am the president of Fraternal Order Police Lodge 34, and we do represent all of the members, active and retired, of the Maryland Transportation Authority Police. I'm here today to ask for your support in Bill 98. As you heard from Ray Mikowski, I had the pleasure of working with him for many years. We do have a big presence as the Transportation Authority Police inside Baltimore County. As a matter of fact, we have about 200 of our members who live inside the county, and we have many, many miles of jurisdiction, including interstates like 95, 895, 695, 195, just to say a few. Our FOP Lodge is actually located in Middle River. Our state headquarters is located in Baltimore County, along with our police academy is also located inside Baltimore County. So to say that a presence is an understatement. We have a lot of officers that work and live inside Baltimore County. We all remember back to the Key Bridge, the fatal night earlier this year, and that happened inside Baltimore County on the eastern side, and Maryland Transportation Authority Police acted heroically and actually saved upwards of 60 lives that day by stopping traffic immediately. And a lot of those lives, almost half of them, and the vehicles that were stopped were inside Baltimore County. That being said, earlier this year, there was an amendment added to the current legislation that would include Maryland state troopers to the current law for property tax credit for disabled officers. Unfortunately, it doesn't include MDTA police. And that being said, you could have an MDTA police officer who was injured in line of duty, living directly next door to a Maryland state trooper with the same injuries, but only the trooper would qualify for that property tax credit. So I'm here to ask for your support on Bill 98, which would correct that inequity. In addition to the fiscal note, I know that's always a concern, but in our internal audit, the impact to the county would be miniscule. As a matter of fact, it appears that less than 10 of our members would even qualify for this bill, so it's a very small fiscal impact. But the message that you would send by passing this for support of law enforcement is immeasurable. So in closing, I do ask for you to support this bill, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions about what this entails.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilman Crandall.
No questions, Mr. Acting Chair. I just want to thank Mr. Krasinski for his leadership and his service. As the council representative for the 7th District, home to the Port of Baltimore, home to Trade Point Atlantic, and obviously, home to the Key Bridge, MDTA presence in our neck of the woods is certainly very visible, and also, I do appreciate how you support Baltimore County Police in the 12th Precinct in their endeavors regarding traffic in and around the areas around the port. And as the port grows and Trade Point Atlantic grows, we're going to need even more support from you. So I'm happy to support this bill, knowing that your officers are often putting their lives on the line, just like other types of police officers around the country. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Jones?
No, I guess wanted to weigh in and offer my support for the bill and ask that the secretary place me down as a co-sponsor as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Krasinski. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Alicia Pastorek.
Okay, good to see you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening. My name is Alicia Pastorek, and I was born and raised in the Perry Hall Nottingham area. I currently live with my husband in White Marsh in Baltimore County. So in 2012, I entered and completed the Maryland Transportation Authority Police Academy. And prior to my career-ending injury, I served the citizens of Baltimore County for approximately 10 years. I enforced traffic laws, removed and confiscated drugs from the streets, assisted motorists involved in motor vehicle accidents off of 95, 895, 695, and removed numerous drunk drivers from our roadways here in Baltimore County. In one particular incident, I was off-duty in my personal vehicle, traveling the Key Bridge northbound, and as I was descending down the bridge, I observed a vehicle coming through the Toll Plaza the wrong way, traveling southbound toward us head-on. I swerved, dragging traffic behind me to alert the traffic to the danger ahead. As I flashed my lights and beeped the horn, I was able to block the driver from progressing up the bridge successfully and got that driver turned around and stopped at the Toll Plaza. At that time, my husband exited the vehicle. He's also an officer with the Maryland Transportation Authority Police. He opened the driver door and removed the driver and the keys while I called MDTA dispatch to have an officer respond and handle the impaired driver. So even off-duty as a law enforcement officer, we're still driven to protect the citizens of our county. Unfortunately, approximately, as I said, 10 years into service, I was injured in a Taser accident when I shattered my wrist. After three surgeries, I was unable to return to full duty and was then retired due to disability. So my simple request is that you all please consider and support this bill for any disabled law enforcement officer who lives in and works in Baltimore County, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pastorek, for your service and sacrifice. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Paul Pastorek.
Very good. Welcome, Mr. Pastorek.
Welcome, sir. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm Paul Pastorek. My wife just spoke. We both have been members of the Maryland Transportation Authority Police and members of the FOP Lodge 34. First, I'd like to say that we thank you, all of us speaking today. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us on this bill and hopefully gaining all your support as this bill moves forward. I've been, I am still active police. I am actually the sergeant that was on the Key Bridge the night of the tragedy. I was on the Baltimore County side. I stopped traffic coming southbound on 695 towards the Key Bridge. Sir, I will say that the members of the Maryland Transportation Authority Police that currently serve and who have been retired due to injuries have gave many, many sacrifices and continue to give those sacrifices to Baltimore County. Because we work in these areas, we also live in these areas. I've had the pleasure of speaking with Councilman Marks. I support everything and anything that he needs done within his, within his work. I feel like that just given the opportunity to have a voice, even though I am not currently retired, says a lot about the Baltimore County Councilman, just being able to hear us and listening to our FOP president proceed with this, want this bill to proceed. So again, we thank you for your time. We certainly look forward to backing the Councilman of Baltimore County and, of course, Councilman Marks, and we live in his district. And if there's anything that we can do going forward, please don't hesitate to ask from us, as we look forward to working with you with this bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pastorek. I think I speak for everyone here in saying that you and your colleagues were true heroes that night. Thank you, sir.
I couldn't have said it better, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay. No more speakers on that bill. Now we're going to move on to Resolution 4724, sponsored by five council members, actually six council members, establishing the 2025 redistricting commission. Does anyone wish to speak to this resolution?
Is Councilman Catch with us?
I don't see him.
Okay. I just wanted to say that the idea behind the redistricting commission was really the brainchild of Councilman Catch, who offered an amendment to the bill on the referendum to put council expansion on the ballot. This is something that the council decided that we would do. When that bill was passed, we also passed a map with it, knowing that we would go back and review that map by October 25, and the establishment of a redistricting commission is a step in that direction, and it's something that many of us on the dais, when we were kind of being criticized for producing that map, that we promised that we would do, and I think that through this bill that we were following through on that promise. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Councilman Ortell?
To add what Councilman Crandall had said, one of the reasons we wanted to put this resolution together is that there has never been a council expansion, so the only time that there's redistricting is after a census. So basically, what this resolution does is it clarifies what will happen in this redistricting commission, which is basically the same thing that happens every 10 years for the census. But in the charter, it didn't address redistricting due to expansion of the council, so this is a timely resolution to just clarify what we need to do going forward as a body.
Thank you, Councilman Ortell. Councilman Potoka?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate my colleagues that have joined me in sponsoring and co-sponsoring this bill, this resolution, I'm sorry. This is really an important point in Baltimore, in Baltimore County. We are going to expand the council, are going to create additional opportunities, and I always call this the perfect storm of opportunity for people of color and women to gain elected office in Baltimore County, because we have two additional seats. We, at the same time in 2026, the public finance option will go into place, and so it will not cost as much money to run for office for council in Baltimore County, because you can multiply small donations. I believe it's a multiplying factor of three. And so this is really, this is a good, I think this allows us to step off of 1956, the year 1956, where we've been entrenched for some almost 70 years, move into the 21st century and create opportunity. And now, I know that there was a lot of discussion about the layout of each councilmatic district, and now we'll move forward from what the voters overwhelmingly supported, the voters overwhelmingly supported, adding two additional districts. And now it's up to us, colleagues, to figure out where these lines are going to be, and I appreciate everyone stepping forward and rolling up their sleeves to join me in this effort. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Potoka. Any more comments? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I feel the need to, I mean, I was hoping I could just sit here and move forward, but I can't, you know, when I hear this, a lot of, you know, rewriting history, I think it's important that, I guess, give an opposing point of view. Number one, Councilman Potoka mentioned that the citizens voted for a council expansion. They did. And nowhere on the ballot that the citizens voted for did they know anything about a map, a map that was created, a map that will become law December the 5th. And I am hopeful that this redistricting commission, I mean, we're happy that Councilman Catch insisted on it. It's all spelled out in the county charter in terms of the way things would go, but we went a different route, and we created a map that will become law December the 5th. Now I am hopeful that this commission, people will go into it, be in earnest and honest and give it a good shot, and hopefully, we will produce a new map. But I can't help but reiterate, the map that's going to become law December the 5th did not have to be. There did not have to be a map. There did not have to be a map. And it was a map. The map was codified in the law, and it will become law December the 5th. And that map had zero public input. That map had none of the community input that's normally associated with redistricting and producing the maps as we have done for the history of Baltimore County. So now we have this map, comes law December the 5th, and now we're going to have a redistricting commission to hopefully come up with a new map. And I guess the proof will be in the pudding. We'll see how it all works, but I guess I think it's important to mention that facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any additional comments from any of my colleagues? Okay, hearing none. I believe we have one speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
We did have a registered speaker, Ms. Sharonda Hoffman, who, in her registration, said that she would be on virtually, but unfortunately...
She's here.
Oh, she's here in person? Okay, I thought that might be the case. She registered virtually. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bel Castro. Ms. Hoffman, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Hoffman.
I went to wish the council a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you, you too.
And I apologize, I sometimes try to do stuff on my phone, but I don't have my glasses, but I meant to stay in person. But my name is Sharonda Hoffman, and I am in District 7, and possibly the future District 8. I am of the Middlesex Community Essex, Maryland, and the Baltimore County Council is in the process of establishing a seven-member redistricting commission to propose new district boundaries, following the recent voter-approved expansion. And I do want to reiterate that, you know, Councilman Jones, you have a great point. So it's harder to fix something that's approved than just to start from the beginning. But I'm going to have faith and hope that, as Councilman Catch said, we should trust you. So I'm going to put some ideas out there. With the selection criteria for the commission has not been explicitly detailed, it's essential that employees possess some familiarity or expertise in areas such as urban planning, manipulation of GIS data, and a thorough understanding of the Voter Rights Act to ensure fair and legally compliant district maps. Please consider seeking a community planning ambassador. In the cohort, I was able to understand the county's planning process, as well as utilize the resources provided by the planning department. I hope the council is deliberate and intentional in seeking representation that are not merely going to rubber-stink the wishes of the council who appointed them. If they require training, please seek it from a third party, as well as some internal experts. Since there is no publicly available information indicating that the appointed commissioners will receive formal training on the redistricting principles and legal requirements, is this a consideration? That's the question. And will the councils solicit the planning department to have GIS data available, listing factors such as race, non-English speakers, et cetera, so the constituents will have the ability to create their own configurations of maps online, so when they come to the meeting, they have some data to support their findings? Given the complexities involved in the redistrictings and the legal implications under the Voting Rights Act, it would be prudent for the council to consider implementing a training program for the commissioners. This will equip them with the necessary knowledge to create equitable and legally sound district maps. Also, the three public hearings and the commission meetings should be accessible online and in person. Technology should be adequate to the commissioners, can be heard online, and you can review actual maps in person. Further, we should be using closed captioning in our public meetings like we're having today, when we're in person, without requesting a reasonable accommodation. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Catch has joined us. Councilman Catch, did you want to say anything?
I have been trying to get on for a half hour. This is the bill that deals with setting up a commission for redistricting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, I heard her testimony, and yeah, thank her very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, I was just, I was just sitting there thinking, and Ms. Hoffman, thank you for your testimony. And I was sitting there thinking about, it will create opportunities, additional districts. And I was just thinking about being the chairman of the Public Financing Work Group when we came up with the wherewithal and the, I guess, the ideas for, Councilman Marks sat on that committee with me as well. So it's something you might want to consider if you're thinking about running for office, you might want to look at it. I think it's an excellent opportunity in terms of helping to raise funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Any other comments? Questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, there's a little nuance. So the resolution was introduced on November 18, and normally, as you know, and the council knows, a resolution has a work session, then is voted on at the next meeting after that work session, unlike a bill that takes more of like a monthly cycle. In this particular case, because the council, I'm sorry, because the ballot question does not take effect until December 5, and the ballot question, which approved the charter change to allow this redistricting process that is going to be forthcoming, that resolution, this resolution we're talking about, will not be voted on until December the 16th, so that when it's being voted on, it will be pursuant to an effective, to the effectiveness of the ballot measure. I hope that all makes sense. The long and the short of it is, this resolution will not be voted on on December 2, it'll be voted on on December 16. So there will be one more work session on December 10, and then it'll be voted on at the next meeting after that. And it's on our website like that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
I'd like to be a co-sponsor.
Mr. Catch is.
Oh, good. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Potoka.
Given the significance of this resolution, I was wondering if the council secretary would be kind enough to go through the proposed schedule of the process for the redistricting history.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, sir?
I was hoping that, Mr. Secretary, you might be able to go through the schedule for the redistricting commission, the process for their public hearings, when they could have a proposed map, and so on.
The tentative schedule is for the commission to be announced at the first January meeting, on January 6, for the commission members, which will need to be voted on and confirmed by the council, to be confirmed on the meeting on January the 21, which I think is a Tuesday, because Monday is the MLK holiday. And then, once they are impaneled, they will have several public meetings. They will also have public hearings, most likely in March and April, or March or April. The commission will complete its work in mid-June of 2025, and this will give the county council the opportunity to then consider their recommendations and put in legislation to adopt a map by the October 1, 2025 deadline.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and again, I want to thank my colleagues. This council has shown the ability to roll up its sleeves, step lines, and to work hard as a governing body to make very difficult issues, to address them and address them in an appropriate place. Thank you, Mr. Secretary, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Councilman Potoka. Okay, so that concludes our public speakers for tonight. Before we move on, I do want to acknowledge an important milestone today. The county council has a detail, and today marks the final meeting for Officer Barry Jordan, who has faithfully served Baltimore County for 28 years. Where's Officer Jordan? Officer Jordan, please stand up. Thank you, Officer Jordan, and thank you to all who serve and who have served. Okay, now we're going to move on to the consideration of fiscal matters and contracts. The first person to come forward from the Department of Health and Human Services, Mr. Lawrence Richardson, Deputy Director. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilmen Marks, members of the council. The administration is seeking your approval for the Third Amendment of a lease for our public health emergency preparedness warehouse with St. John's property. Our warehouse is 6,000 square feet. The storage space is on Greenspring Drive in Timonium. It's utilized for our public health emergency preparedness supplies during public health emergencies, and we've had this facility, it's a 10-year lease. It commences on January 1st, 2025, and will extend for 10 years through December 31st of 2029, not to exceed a full amount of $553,960.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? Hearing none, thank you very much. Okay, next up is the Director of the Office of Information Technology, Mr. Christopher Martin. Mr. Martin, welcome. Oh, does he? Yes, oh, I apologize, Mr. Richardson. I'm sorry, yes. We have one more thing. Bill 10224, sorry about that. Community Supported Agriculture LHT Project.
Yes. The administration is seeking your approval for a supplemental appropriation of $17,000 for our community-supported agriculture grant. The grant will be used to help farmers to engage with SNAP benefits, supplemental nutritional benefits, and to accept the EBT card at farmers' markets. The initial program will be for training of farmers on how to utilize this technology in order to help facilitate more healthy foods and improve health outcomes in the community. So it's a small grant that we're utilizing to help train farmers to utilize SNAP benefits at farmers' markets.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, councilmembers, thank you. So the administration is requesting your approval for a multi-year agreement with On Call Concepts Incorporated for Miss Utility notifications based on a sole source procurement. On Call Concepts is the sole provider of these notification services and has exclusive rights to the software that maintains the databases of locations of underground utilities throughout the county. On Call Concepts will provide Miss Utility notification services for the Department of Public Works and for the Office of Information Technology. Prior to digging, a person, firm, corporation, or other entity is required by Maryland state law to contact Miss Utility. On Call Concepts identifies any county-owned underground utility and notifies the appropriate county agencies so that they may take appropriate action to prevent damage to the underground property. The estimate is approximately $38,000 annually, however, in no event shall the compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of county council-approved appropriation in any contract year.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this fiscal matter? Thank you, Mr. Martin. That concludes our consideration of fiscal matters and contracts. Next, we'll move on to one of the remaining items under miscellaneous business, Resolution 4624. This is a resolution that I'm sponsoring that would amend the Perry Hall Community Plan. Specifically, it would modify some of the parking arrangements in the, kind of, the central business district of Perry Hall. I am working with the Perry Hall Improvement Association to fine-tune the language. I have committed to them that we will seek consensus before we move forward on this, but hopefully, we will be able to achieve that. Are there any other comments or questions on this resolution? Okay. Next, let's move on to bills for first consideration. It's called, Mr. Hickey, Terry Hickey? Mr. Terry Hickey? Oh, there we go. Yeah. This is from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Try that again. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Heather Sheridan, and I'm the Chief of Homeless Services with the Baltimore County Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm here today on behalf of the administration and Department of Housing and Community Development requesting a supplemental appropriation of state funding for our county homeless services programs. The additional appropriation as detailed in Bill 101-24 represents additional state funds in the amount of $580,476 to support homeless prevention and time-limited rental assistance, also referred to as rapid rehousing. DHCD is always seeking additional funding to support all county homeless services programs, so we are thrilled to receive the additional funds, and we appreciate and thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have Bill 10324, presented by Kevin Reed. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and councilmembers. This is an order of business that comes up each year with our annual bond ordinance. And just to set kind of some reframing around our debt process, as you know, we advance debt with our bond referendum bill that the council approves to move on to the voters. Then the voters approve the bond referendum. We then have a budget process, right, capital budget process where the capital budget is locked in and adopted. And then finally, that brings us to what this piece is, our bond ordinance. And this is per Section 709 of the county charter, which actually gives us the authorization to borrow and issue debt. So this, what this specifically does is, we are requesting approval of this ordinance to authorize issuance and sale of up to $418 million in bonds and bond anticipation notes, the authority to issue refunding bonds and purchase development rights. So the county sells bonds or bands annually to fund our capital projects, again, that have been approved in our capital budget and by voter. And again, everything in this ordinance has been prior approved by the voters and in the budget, current projects that are ongoing. There's nothing new in this. These are, the referendum and all the referendum borrowing ordinances did pass this last November, but again, we are working off of prior ordinances as far as this is concerned. Again, the proceeds will be used to fund projects that were approved in this budget based on the cash needs that we have in our available funds. So specifically, as far as authorization, we will plan to request up to $177 million in consolidated public improvement bonds, these are CPI bonds, which includes $126 million for schools, $31 million for public works, $6 million for the community college, $5 million for agricultural preservation, $8 million for waterway improvements, and $1 million for refuse disposal. And this bill will authorize, on the metro side, up to $241 million in metro district bonds, including the issuance through the Maryland Water Infrastructure Borrowing Revolving Loan Program, which offers us really good subsidized rates. It will authorize us to be able to refund callable debt, and that's debt that becomes due that we can refinance on outstanding issues, provided that there is a minimum 3% net present value savings to the county. And our financial advisor is Public Resource Advisory Group, and they monitor the markets with Office of Budget and Finance for those refunding opportunities and when they are most advantageous. The bill will also authorize the purchase of development rights through an installment purchase program, an IPA. And although rarely used, this program encourages agricultural landowners to sell land or land preservation easements to the county, and would allow OBF to issue debt for those purposes. With certain exceptions, the authority to issue bonds and bands will expire on December 31 of 2025. So when we talk about our debt issuance plans, again, bands are short-term notes sold in anticipation of issuing longer-term debt, normally paid off within one year, and will allow us flexibility when we issue debt. If the yield curve is inverted, which right now we are currently in kind of a flat environment, that we may issue bonds in lieu of bands, however, this ordinance would give us the availability to look at both, again, in conjunction with our financial advisors. The county last issued $115 million of 20-year CPI serial bonds last July on the 24th at 3.64%, and $45 million 30-year metropolitan serial bonds at 4.12%. And while the FY '24 borrowing ordinance authorized up to $140 million for CPI, we only needed to issue about $115 million as a result of lower-than-expected cash expenditures. The county estimates, again, that we will issue up to $177 million CPI bonds. We are hoping for around the 3.5% rate, and $141 million in metro district bonds at 4%. We plan to do this in March of 2025. In addition, we expect to commit up to $100 million in metro district bonds through the Maryland Water Infrastructure Revolving Loan Program. And again, the actual rates depend on the timing of the sale. Another thing we look at when we have the bond ordinance is our debt affordability ratios. You know, there are five important ratios that we monitor: debt to estimated full value, debt per capita, debt per personal income, debt service to general fund revenues, and then again, we look at our fund balance. Again, we talked last year about the one metric that we were running up close to was debt service to general fund revenues. And, you know, to accommodate the growing needs and what the debt affordability study includes as far as the referendum that was approved this November. So not to conflate two things, but we will be working with the spending affordability and asking them to increase our debt limit from 9.5% to 10.5%. And really, this is in line with, and Rundle County, I believe, has 11%, and some other of our AAA-rated counties, and our financial advisors tell us that we are, you know, that wouldn't be detrimental to any type of future rating action. So another area is the debt per capita, since we have kind of a stagnant population growth, actually a slight decrease, that we are looking to increase that metric from $2,300 to $3,000 per person again. And that's not something that we're running up against now, and not something that the Debt Affordability Committee really opines on, but something that we did want to put in our debt policies. Again, we will continue to monitor these ratios. Details about, we have a very transparent and in-depth debt affordability study, it's on our website, and anyone can check it out, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Patoka.
Thank you. Director Reed, could you remind us what fiscal year this, that this, that will, when will we actually appropriate projects? What fiscal year?
What, these were projects that have prior, that had been appropriated?
I understand, but are the specific projects in the capital, as I said, or specific fiscal years?
The capital budget, so we, I think I'm a little confused by your question, so...
Was this fiscal year '25, fiscal year '24?
This is fiscal year '25. This is a capital budget that was just approved.
Gotcha, okay, that's what I wanted to understand. And so it's as specific as that capital budget, I guess, would be answered to that.
I'm sorry, Councilman, we couldn't understand that.
So the specificity of where the proceeds from those bond sales will go is as specific as the fiscal '25 capital budget? Is that correct assumption?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, we are working within those project classifications, and again, with the debt issuance, when we formulate the budget, we formulate, you know, obviously, the cash that we put in and then the money that we need to borrow. You know, with this ordinance, again, this would be, you know, a max amount that we would ask to, the ability to finance if necessary, but again, if we have slower-than-cash needs, then that, this would, we would borrow less. So our goal is always to pay cash first.
Gotcha. And so, and how does it fit within the spending affordability guidelines?
Yes, sir, yeah, I mean, debt service is factored into the spending affordability guideline, yes, there's no exception there.
And did I hear you say, if I understand it correctly, that 10% or perhaps 11% of our budget would be attributed to debt service?
To debt service to general fund revenues would be, we're requesting or recommending by the financial advisors, max of 10.5%.
And are we retiring old debt at the same time that we are taking on new debt?
Yeah, we actually, you know, our guidelines require that, you know, we retire, 25% of debt gets paid off within five years. That's 25%. We're actually hitting 43%. And the other metric we look at is 50% of our debt would be paid off in 10, and we are paying off 73%.
Okay, thank you.
But to your question, yeah, we are, I mean, our capital program is growing, right? So we have more cash, and we have more bonding authority that the voters just approved moving into it, and it will be moving into in the future. So it's really, you know, a question of the needs that we have moving forward.
But the preference is to use general fund, and then if we don't have general fund, we would then look to proceed from bond status?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other, Councilman, I think Crandall you were first, yeah.
Mike, Mike hit his button first.
Councilman or tell?
Go ahead, sir. Director Reed, I have two questions. It looks like this borrowing would take us to 10 and 1/2% of our debt ratio to revenues from 9 and 1/2%?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that would be the...
So does that affect our bond rating, our triple bond rating?
Yeah, so that's a good question, Councilman. I mean, there are a multitude of factors that go into play in a bond rating, right? So, and we're using, we rely on our financial advisors, Public Resource Advisory Group, and Bond Counsel, obviously, to advise us, and this is something that they advised us on in the sustainability of our capital budget. You know, we have three goals, is to retain the bond rating, and to continue to fund this capital program as it exists, and this is part of that, and ensure that, you know, debt service remains affordable. I think, you know, in fairness, what I think, the bond rating agencies are looking more at fund balance levels, and less pressures on the general fund is important, but where we end up in fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year, and what we budget for as far as our reserves, where we're at currently 10%, I mean, that's something that they really want to ensure is firmed up, and, you know, the question is, is 10% what they want to see? I mean, 10% is what we decided as a body between the council and the administration that that was a fair limit, and we are sticking with that, that that is a fair limit for us. We have a very stable diversified economy, but, so to your question, it's not the only thing that they look at, but our financial advisors are recommending that we increase it in order to keep this program going.
I mean, is there a, and I don't know that this is related, but is there a possibility that as we borrow more, that the general fund will need more money in this? And where I'm going with this is, would that require more tax revenue in order to make, you know, balance that revenue to debt ratio?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, our debt service is one of those growing costs that, along with retirement and pension system, and that we monitor health insurance and all of those, is what we call the fixed cost, right, of running this $5 billion organization that, you know, is not necessarily out of line with what we would expect to see in an organization like this. But it's something that we monitor and that we will keep an eye on.
Okay. Is there a way for us to get a list of capital projects that this, that the borrowing is for?
Yes.
Is that something we could get for?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance, yeah.
Like, specific projects, not just, not just categories, not order ways? We know that, but we'd like to see the actual projects that we're borrowing for.
We can get that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Reed? So has SAC approved going to 10 and 1/2%?
They have not, no, that would be a discussion, that would be in the metrics that come out for our... for FY '26.
Okay. And I suppose we don't know who from the council would be, the two members from the council who would be sitting on SAC at that time, I suppose. We wouldn't know that now.
Three of us.
26th, Director Reed said SAC would approve.
For FY '26, they, they would, along with the spending affordability guideline of the personal income growth, that there would be some recommendations on what, and particularly general fund, debt service to general fund revenues. So what, you know, and, you know, if, if the committee were not to approve that, we would look at slumming up the capital program and having to look at kind of balancing that out.
Okay. It was, in my, my time on the, on the committee, it's a fairly conservative committee, I think, as it should be. So it just seems, seems like going up a full point. You know, and I'm not a financial expert, certainly, but it, it just seems like going, going up a full point seems a, a little, a little risky, especially given, given the point that, taking it up a full point, to Councilman O'Tel's point, to, to balance out that ratio and having to raise revenues means raising taxes, which is not a very popular thing in Baltimore County, as you know. So other, other revenues that are talked about, and the auditor provided us and I'm sure shared with you, pretty detailed analysis of this. Metro district fees were, if I'm not mistaken, were raised, there's a phase in raise after 20, what year would that have been? When, when, when Mr. Moller was the interim county executive, that was one of his gifts to us, is to raise metropolitan district fees by, I think, 14%, phasing them in over years, if you recall that?
I do.
Are, are we looking to, to raise metro district fees simply through raising the rates to our homeowners?
So I, I, I couldn't give you that, that answer right now for it. That would be something that we'd have to formulate with the FY '26 budget. But I, but I think the idea and the intent was to smooth it out so that you wouldn't get those type of large fluctuations. But we, we do not have a figure on that right now.
Okay. And I, and I know sometimes these things aren't always easy to forecast. And certainly, Madam CEO knows this, some things happen where you need better metro district money for things that were not necessarily foreseeable: weather events and, and system breakdowns, things like that. But it's always been my impression that metro district was always intended to be self-sustaining. It appears that we've kind of, we're kind of moving away from that. And the only way to sustain it, I know costs have gone up, but it seems like we've been raising the rate over the past, what, eight years? When, when County Executive Moller instituted that. So I'm just, I'm just kind of fearful that we are looking at potentially a property tax increase that we just discussed, and we're also looking at metro district fee increase at the same time. And I just want to express that concern. And if my concerns aren't valid, please tell me. But I just want to express it because this, this is not going to go over well with our constituency. So just, if, if I'm off base, let me know.
Well, we can go back and look at the numbers. I don't recall, now, I wasn't here during the Moller administration, but from DPWT, I thought that the rates for the last couple of years that the CE approved were not an increase in rates. But I can, I was looking back here, Lauren, because I can't remember off the top of my head, but we'll get you the numbers for the last couple of years. I really don't know about the Moller administration.
Okay. Well, maybe the, maybe the fee increases from that administration, maybe they were phased in, and the years that they were, they were phased in, maybe those have passed, which is why your administration has maintained consistency on the rate. So maybe we can ask auditors to, to look into the history of that a little, a little bit. Give us a short report. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam CEO. Director Reed?
Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Catch.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Kevin, as long as I've been on the council, that lid has been 9.5%. Do you have any idea how long it's been at 9.5%?
Yeah, Councilman, I believe it was increased in 2014.
14. Okay, that was, okay, and that was the year that...
I believe, yeah.
I was elected, so, okay. And so it's been 10 years, right?
Correct.
10 years. You said that other counties that have a AAA bond rating are up to 11%, I believe you said?
Anne Rundle County is at 11.5, yes.
And are there, what, do you know the rates of other counties that are AAA?
I do. And we're on the, just, just a couple that we surveyed. Calver County is 9.5, Charles is 8, Howard County is 10, Prince George's County, as, as that actually maintained 8, and Montgomery is about 10. So, you know, we're, we're in that ballpark.
Now, I, listening very closely to the questions, and what exactly, where exactly are we with this proposal? At 10.5?
In, in, within the next, with the proposal, within the next five years, that we would be up, yes, close to that limit.
And what's this proposal, where are we?
So I think we'd end up this fiscal year if, at around 9.6. So we're still kind of in that, we're just breaching that, that 9.5.
I agree with the councilman from District 7. I think that we ought to consider 10% for now, because it doesn't sound as if that we need to go to 10.5 in the next couple of years. And I am concerned about the debt service. And, you know, when you look at the interest rates, no one knows what they're going to do. Hopefully, they go down. But if we were to go down a notch, and I, I know this isn't going to happen with our credit rating, what, what is the, do you have any idea what the hike in the interest rate would be? Would it be a half a percent, a quarter of a percent, or, or what?
Hike in the interest rate as far as, you mean, if we were, if we were to lower a, a half a percentage point? I, I think...
No, if we were, if we were to lose our AAA.
Got it. You know, I, I really don't know. I mean, we, okay, let, you know, let's say that it might be 20 basis points on debt, you know. So, I mean, you know, nothing, it's, 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 it's dollars, right? I mean, they, they translate into real dollars, but it's something that, you know, we, we have New York telling us that this is, this is a move that we should make, and this is what we, in order to continue our capital program, right? We had big appetites and we, we had a lot of needs, and the community voiced in town halls that they had a lot of, of, of things that they wanted to be addressed. We were building schools, new high schools that are very, very expensive. So, and, and that you would see that were voted for in the FY '26 voter referendum. So this is all, again, part of that debt study. And, you know, this, I'm trying to be transparent and open with the council, because this ordinance is not, I'm talking about the five-year debt study, but I just wanted to give kind of a preview of, of what's coming up this winter and when we talk about debt in the, in the spring and with the FY '26 budget. But, but this ordinance is, you know, really just, just part of the, the county, regular county business that, you know, in order to allow us the, the ability to work with our financial advisors when the market's right and, and to be able to, to issue debt when it's appropriate. And that's something we've been doing, and we've been doing it very successfully.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You, Councilman Crandall?
Mr. Chair, yeah, just, just real quick, I just wanted to, 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 to say that many times, especially when we're talking about budgets, it's all about balance. It's about creating a balance between wants and needs and the fiscal constraints that we're under. And every single one of us advocates for capital projects in our district. And, and we want these things to, to happen, and our, our constituents want these things to happen too. And then there's a balance of, okay, well, what are we, are we willing to give up as a taxpayer in order to, how bad do we really want these things? Because, and I think that sometimes it, it can be lost on us as politicians, and it could certainly be lost on our citizenry. But something that Councilman Marx and I talk about quite often is property tax assessments from the state on the east side just went up substantially. And now, with the information that you're sharing with us today, we're, we're looking at fee increases potentially, and potentially a necessary property tax raise. That's, that's going to hit a lot of residents really, really hard, especially in a high inflationary period. And I don't really care what President Biden says. I don't think he's been to the store to buy eggs and milk lately. So it's, it's, some of this is going to be a tough pill to swallow for our, our constituents.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Councilman Crandall, it was a 23% jump at the end of last year from that eastern area that was assessed. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Reed, there were some excellent questions posed by the auditor. Could your team take a crack at answering those written, not now, but in written form?
Can we provide them written form?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Reed, I also think you have, let's see, Bill 9024, correct?
Yes, sir, I do. So 9024 is, it's a second reading of our retirement bill. The retirement bill, this consists of two items. First, to achieve consistency with state law, it clarifies the definition of military service to include active duty with the Commission Corps of the Public Health Service, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and the Coast Guard and Geodetic Survey. It provides service credit for military service in the Maryland National Guard or of a reserve component of the Armed Forces of the United States that's incurred prior to county employment, not to exceed 44 months. The second thing this does is it provides a death benefit enhancement for our police personnel, supervisory management, and confidential employees, which are on page Schedule 7, also known as police SMC, that were results of the FY '25 meet and confer. This will add a spousal drop option. It's a backdrop upon the death of an active police SMC, ERS member who is eligible for the drop. And this enhancement was made, cost neutral to the system, by increasing, the police SMC will be increasing their contribution rate by .07 beginning this January 1 of 2025. And happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do believe, Mr. Chair, there, there will be some amendments coming from the administration just further clarifying. Technical just, just really hit home the prior-to service, and I, I think the council might have an amendment as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair, I know that Councilman Potoka, Chairman Potoka, and I both have co-sponsored this bill, and I would encourage my colleagues to consider sponsoring as well.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Boswick, can you add my name as a sponsor?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Benjamin, thank you for your ongoing discussions with some of our stakeholders about this bill.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Hearing none, and no other comments. Mr. Reed, I think you're done. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Okay, the next bill for first consideration is Bill 10424. This is actually my legislation. There was some chuckling when we introduced the, this bill dealing with the operation of golf cart on county highways. In the last session of the General Assembly, the legislature passed a bill that allows for counties to authorize golf carts to be used on certain highways, certain roads. Golf carts, in fact, are used on many routes in my district, I also believe Councilman Crandall's district, mainly in very self-contained communities on the east side, places like Hairwood Park, Oliver Beach, Wilson Point, et cetera. So we are now allowed to enact this type of ordinance. I thought it would be prudent, instead of passing a bill, to authorize a pilot program in which the, the county council sets parameters, allows for this to be implemented, but specifies in a subsequent resolution where the streets are going to be. The pilot program would expire after a certain amount of time. At the end of that time, or toward the end of that time, the police department and the public works department would issue a report to us. So if this is not working, we can pull it back. That's the purpose of a pilot program. We've done pilot programs before. We did it with the social host ordinance in Towson. And I think it's a good way of studying the effectiveness of things without going full throttle into legislation. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for the council to adopt a pilot program that allows for a very limited, or limited number of routes, golf carts to be operated. There are specific requirements. For example, they can be operated during the daytime. There will have to be registration, appropriate registration. They can only be driven by fully licensed drivers, et cetera. And then we come back to the council with the routes that are actually going to be designated. So that's the purpose of the bill. And Councilman Crandall?
Sure. Thanks, Councilman. I, so I had my staff check on correspondence after talking with the administration. Administration obviously expressed some concerns. I know the police department has some concerns as well. So I, my staff did check our email for support. And you're right, there are communities in the 7th District that would support this. So I'm happy to work with you on what roads, and obviously with DPWT, on what roads would be appropriate. So one of the things that, without knowing what the General Assembly passed, what is the definition of a golf cart? Does anybody know? Because you, you could put a, you could put a powerful combustion engine in a golf cart.
Is it spelled out in the...
Is it spelled out? Is it defined in the state legislation?
Correct. I don't think it is.
So I have some, some constituents that would put like a Hemi in a golf cart. And I mean that as a compliment, by the way. I'm just, I'm just curious because, you know. We'll figure it out later. We'll take a look at the, we can, we can take a look at the, the, the state legislation and see if we can...
It's House, it's House Bill 43. That's the state legislation.
See if we can find a definition on, on that. I'm sorry?
I said, I've seen some very nice ones. Expensive ones.
I remember Deion Sanders had one that, was it Mercedes? Remember that one? But I think that was electric. I don't know. I'm not trying to make light of it. I'm just trying to get a little clarity.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
If I may, we're not the first to go down this road. There, there is currently, well, before the bill was passed by the General Assembly, there were statutes on the books that allowed golf cart use in other jurisdictions on a limited basis. So we can certainly recheck those just to make sure there weren't any additional restrictions, just to cover that. But if they're absent that, we might need to, to deal with that ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Catch?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Pilot is a good...
When we're thinking about this bill, you know, word does spread. And how are we going to make certain that people know that this program is only limited to a few roads to a few roads on the east side? And, you know, people say, oh, yeah, we can use a golf course now. I mean, a golf cart on this road and that road. We've got to make sure that people in the rest of the county don't think they can use any road, you know, use a golf cart on any road. Would we... I'm sure it would be very expensive to post signs saying, "No golf carts allowed," or anything like that. That would cost a fortune, I'm sure. So when you're looking at this bill, looking at what other counties have done, please keep that in mind.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, I'd like to call Ms. Lauren Buckler, Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, who will discuss three bills. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three bills before you tonight. Bill 8324 is for amending the 2425 current expense budget by appropriating to the Gifts and Grants Special Revenue Fund monies derived from the federal government and made available to the county through the Maryland Department of Transportation. These are funds for our Loop program, additional funds that were not appropriated at the time that we did our budgeting last year. So we're asking to add funds to the Loop program from MDOT. The second bill, 8424, is also amending the FY 2425 current expense budget by appropriating to the Gifts and Grants Special Revenue Funds monies derived from the federal government, made available to the county through the Maryland Department of Transportation. This one is specific to County Ride to support our program there. Again, this funding wasn't known at the time that we did the budget, so it's additional funding we're bringing into the state to support the county's program. And the third bill, 8524, is also amending the 2425 current expense budget by appropriating to the Gifts and Grants Special Revenue Fund monies derived from the federal government, made available to the county through MDOT. And this one also goes to County Ride for our rural roots area. Happy to take any questions that you may have. Again, all of these add money to the county's budget coming through MDOT.
Thank you very much, Ms. Buckler. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, I'd like to call Major Glenn Wydic from the Police Department. Councilman Crandall?
Major Wydic, you should note that Councilman Potoka is not here today because he knew you were coming, and I think he's afraid of you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
With Councilman Crandall and my colleagues as to whether, at this point in the meeting, is appropriate for Major Wydic, or it seems a bit early.
It is early. We're running in an efficient meeting.
Send him back to the pew.
Thank you. Major Wydic?
Councilmembers, just like Department of Public Works, the Police Department originally appropriated $35,000 each for two grants from the Maryland Department of Transportation, one for the Department's Speed Enforcement Grant and one is for the Distracted Driving Grant. When we actually received the grant, we received $40,000 and $38,000. So one grant, we're asking to accept 5,000 more. Another grant, we're asking to accept 3,000 more. There's no county matching funds. It's money for it to be used for the program.
Thank you very much, Major Wydic. Any discussion? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Renee Coleman, Director of the Office of Human Resources. Ms. Coleman, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Bill 8824 implements changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan. It's recommended by the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board or required as a result of labor negotiations for FY 2024. Section 1 of the bill provides that Pay Schedule VII and VIII of the standard salary grades for classified employees are amended to adjusted pay schedules effective January 1, 2025. Section 2 of the bill amends the pay grades for eight class titles in Section 2, Classification and Compensation Plan, effective January 1, 2025. And Section 4 of the bill amends a regulation in Rule 6 regarding promotions in Section 4, Compensation Plan Regulations, effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Coleman? Next, we have Mr. Pete Gutwold, Director of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections, discuss
Good evening, members of the county council. Bill 8924 makes two technical corrections. If you recall, a couple months ago, we adopted a new building code for Baltimore County. These two corrections, one, the first one is correcting a table referenced in the International Building Code. The second correction is adding back in where we inadvertently omitted the section of the maximum height of a fence in the front yard of a residential lot.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Gutwold. Okay, next...
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, sure, Councilman.
Mr. Gutwold, I'm sorry. I guess I had a quick question. And you were talking about the residential fence?
Uh-huh.
In the front yard?
Yes, sir.
What about properties? Have you taken into consideration, because I remember running into a situation before where someone has a house here and someone has a house directly behind it, and it gets a little blurry between who has a front yard and who has a rear yard?
Correct. So there are different... This is just dealing with the traditional front yard facing the road. So there are different standards when your rear yard faces a front yard of a neighboring property. So there are additional setbacks and height limitations associated with that in the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Gutwold. Okay. Next, we'll turn our attention to council-initiated bills. Bill 9124, sponsored by council members Young, Marks, and Crandall, pensions in retirement. Councilman Young is not here. Does anyone else wish to speak to this bill?
I'll just ask that I'll be listed as a co-sponsor on the bill as well. And I think it's important that we give credit to National Guard Service. That's about all I can say about it right now.
Very good.
I'd like to go on as a... I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Just, I'd like to go on as a co-sponsor as well. Just quite simply, Baltimore County already provides time for service members of other branches of the service. So National Guard fits right in.
Right.
Yep.
Very good.
Mr. Secretary, please add me as a co-sponsor.
And you can add me also.
So that's everyone. Okay. No more discussion?
Mark the date. Move on.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Bill 9224, this is sponsored by Councilman Young. Zoning regulations uses permitted in the business major zone contractor storage yard. Councilman, any council members have any comments on this? Okay. Thank you. Bill 9324, sponsored by Councilman Catch. Zoning regulations housing for the elderly. Councilman Catch?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This legislation, we discussed it two weeks ago, but what it does is it gives more opportunity for senior housing in Baltimore County. As you know, we have the second-largest number of senior citizens in our county in the United States. And, you know, some people are aging, certainly not me, but... And our senior population is growing, and we need to provide housing for them. So that's what the bill does. It will need some amendments, which Mr. Boswick is working on.
Correct. And we should have them available tomorrow morning.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you very much. Bill 9524, sponsored... Sorry, 9424, sponsored by Councilman Jones. Uses permitted in the manufacturing light zone. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I will be brief. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This bill deals with a commercial kennel in a very restricted area of the ML Zone. Currently, I have a situation where the front of the building is zoned in such a way where you can have a kennel, but you can't have a kennel in the rear of the building. So this is defined to include dog grooming facilities, veterinary offices, but it is also tailored to only fit a very small, unique area in my district, close to a highway, et cetera, et cetera. So any questions on this bill?
Any discussion? Okay, we're good. Next bill is Bill 9524, also sponsored by Councilman Jones. Bulk regulations in the office of technology zone. Councilman Jones?
Yes. This bill, basically, again, I'll be brief. Bill 9524, bills on the legislation that was passed back in October. I introduced a Bill 7724 in October, where we were talking about the Owens Mills District. And what happened was, you know, unintended consequences. We changed the bill to fix that, and there are some properties outside of that zone that are still in Owens Mills. So there are large numbers of OT zone office parks in Owens Mills that are outside of the township area that can use a flexible, particularly a variety of residential types. As I mentioned earlier about Bill 7724, the OT zoned office parks has been experiencing high vacancy rates, and there are less interest in or need for office spaces. Rather than leaving these buildings vacant and underutilized and having the taxes continue to go down to make good uses of this acreage in these parks, Bill 9524 would broaden the types of residential uses allowed and eliminate restrictions that would prevent these uses like minimum lot area height, et cetera. Bill 9524 passed would allow for the transformation in underperforming office parks in my district, including adding middle housing options like multifamily units, two-over-twos, and single-family attached units. This change or recommendation also is recognized in the Master Plan 2030, where it recognizes the need for additional housing stocks in the county. So this is another bill in an effort to try to increase housing here in Baltimore County. So I would ask my colleagues for their support and indulgence, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jones. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Councilman Potoka?
Councilman Jones, do you have a sense of, since it was zoned for OT and sewage load, student yield are all different from the OT zone for residential uses? Do you have a sense of whether there's appropriate infrastructure to take on additional residence when it was originally zoned for OT, which is quite different than residential?
Yes. It is my understanding that there's adequate infrastructure. There's no overcrowded schools. There's adequate infrastructure to support this request. Again, it only takes into account a small property in my district, particularly the one I have in mind. There is an approval for three office buildings, and right now, only one was built, and the other two lots are sitting there. And the one that's built is half-empty. So I don't think anybody's going to be building on those off... On those lots anytime soon. But to answer your question, yes, there's adequate public facilities to support the request for housing, and I'm certain, sure as I'm standing here, whenever they get to that point, our permits approval and inspections will make sure all of that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this bill? Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll turn to Bill 9724, legislation that I'm sponsoring. This bill would amend the definition of substantial improvement regarding property that was damaged by certain natural events and is under the ownership of a certain specific type of entity. Last March, the Oliver Beach Improvement Association lost the use of its community hall due to a fire. The leaders of the Oliver Beach Improvement Association have been working very hard to get the necessary permits to improve the... To restore the inside of that building. It has been a very onerous process, quite frankly, far more onerous than it should have been. So this bill would modify some of the language in the current ordinance to make sure that when these sort of events happen in the future, they are fixed in an expeditious manner. We are working with the administration on this. We're looking at various grants that are available. There's a decent chance that I will ask for this legislation to be laid over for two weeks on Monday night. But so this is an ongoing process. Any discussion from any of the members? Okay. Thank you. Next, let's turn to Bill 9924, sponsored by Councilman Ortell. Zoning regulations, hookah and vapor lounges.
Thank you, Chair. I have kind of a summary of what we're doing here that hopefully you can indulge me for a few minutes here while I read this. Bill 9924 establishes a set of comprehensive regulations for hookah and vapor lounges. In terms of nightlife venues, hookah lounges in particular are a newer entertainment category compared to the more traditional bars, taverns, and nightclubs that have operated in the county for decades. However, unlike those more well-known establishments, hookah lounges have few regulations ensuring their business does not create threats to health, safety, and welfare of their patrons, the public, and their neighbors. In general, the business model for hookah lounges is to offer tables with hookah equipment and permit patrons to bring their own alcoholic beverages. Some lounges offer table service, where the lounge gifts bottles of liquor for consumption along with alcohol brought by the patrons. Hookah lounges do not require a liquor license and are not governed by the county's liquor board. Hookah lounges were formally regulated in the county in 2014 with the enactment of Bill 1614. That bill permitted hookah lounges in the business local BL zone and also created one-use regulation that hookah lounges may only operate from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. One reason for this time restriction was public safety. Over a six-month period prior to the bill's enactment, county police made 37 late-night arrests unrelated to hookah lounges... Or, I'm sorry, related to hookah lounges, and police received calls linking hookah lounges to underage drinking, assault, drug violations, and handgun violations. Another reason for the time restriction was public health. The county measured significant concentrations of carbon monoxide and other air pollutants at hookah lounges. Because of these legitimate public health and safety concerns, the time restriction was upheld by the Maryland Appellate Court in 2018 as a reasonable and valid restriction. In the intervening decade, the public health, safety, and welfare concerns caused by hookah lounges have not lessened. In fact, they have increased. My office has received numerous constituent complaints of similar activity that led to Bill 1614. I received complaints about hookah lounge patrons fighting in parking lots, wandering in nearby neighborhoods drunk and urinating on lawns, and playing loud music from their cars after leaving the hookah lounge. I've also received complaints about lounges themselves playing their music... I've also received complaints about lounges themselves playing their music inside so loud that neighbors can hear it several hundred feet away. Many of these complaints stem from hookah lounges that are not closing by midnight and not maintaining order in their parking lots and entrances. In addition to constituent complaints in my district, I have discussed this issue with all of my sixth district police captains. The Towson Precinct has provided me a summary of calls for police service that show issues that existed in 2014 persist today. I also have an, I've had extensive conversations with the head of the county's code enforcement office, Adam Whitlock. Mr. Whitlock has also expressed frustration at the difficulty his office has investigating complaints and enforcing the current regulation on hours of operation. As Mr. Whitlock has explained, there are three major hurdles. The first is that the only regulation is hours a hookah lounge can operate. So investigations require his code enforcement inspectors to go out to these lounges late at night on overtime while, well beyond their normal nine-to-five schedule. The second hurdle is that these investigations typically put civilian code enforcement inspectors in potentially dangerous situations with regard to patrons who are under the influence of drugs and alcohol, or both, and often do not respond well to requests to leave the premises. It is also difficult for inspectors to compel the operators to comply with closing at midnight. The third hurdle is that the owners or managers of the hookah lounges view code enforcement violations and penalties as the cost of doing business. Some inspectors have been told even a $1,000 fine is worth it if the hookah lounge can make $5,000 to $7,000 operating well past midnight, and often past when bars are required to close at 2:00 AM. Code enforcement inspectors also suspected hookah lounge operators of lying about when they close, claiming that people coming and going after midnight are cleaning staff and not patrons. The operators have also claimed that as long as they have interior security, they have no responsibility for issues that occur in their parking lots or directly outside their entrance. Bill 9924 was introduced to address these concerns. The bill creates a comprehensive regulatory scheme that will allow the county to ensure public health, safety, and welfare. Again, it is important to note that these businesses are not governed by the liquor board, so some regulation and enforcement here is needed. The bill creates a straightforward and fair use permit process and gives the county a mechanism to revoke or not renew a permit if the establishment is violating the law or use permit requirements. The bill puts in place additional requirements beyond hours of operation. These include a 200-foot distance from any residential property and a requirement to maintain video surveillance, a video surveillance system that monitors nearby off-street parking areas and public entrances. There is also a specific requirement that the establishment must comply with all applicable noise levels in state and county law. The bill also addresses code enforcement issues by permitting the county to obtain business records of the establishment to demonstrate compliance. The bill also allows the police to order a closure of the establishment until the following day to address immediate threats to public health, safety, or welfare. Finally, the bill has an escalation in fines for repeat offenders and ties any financial penalty to the property owner as well as the business owner. My hope is that Bill 9924 will provide the county with tools that ensure hookah and vapor lounges are good neighbors in their communities and that they are in, and will promote positive outcomes that were intended by Bill 1614 10 years ago. I hope my colleagues will join in supporting the bill. Thank you, and sorry for that long narrative.
Perfectly fine. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
Yes. Councilman Ortell, have you discussed this with Delegate Forbes and Senator Washington to see what, well, I know the state could get involved, or do they seem interested in working on the state level to help you resolve this problem? I mean, that is our connection to the liquor board and to granting, you know, possibly granting permits for BYOB or for giving away free liquor, et cetera?
Councilman Catch, I have not actually talked to our state. I've talked to them about the problem, but I have not actually engaged them in looking at regulating this, possibly on the state level as far as liquor laws. But you make a good point. With this bill, we hope at the local level will just deal, you know, the use permit alone, there's no liquor license that they, there's no license that the hookah lounges have to have. So having a use permit gives us some kind of carrot in the sense of if the operator continues to have a problem, that we could take away the use permit where they can't operate. But a lot of these hookah lounges unfortunately have become kind of out-of-control nightclubs where the operators tend not to really care what they're doing. And, you know, I, at the last work session, I pulled a report of just one of the hookah lounges I have, and there were 28 different calls for service. Two of them were shootings. This was all in the last year. Two of them were shootings. One was a patron who left intoxicated, ran over two dogs, and killed them. Fights in parking lots, I mean, you name it, it's been, so we're just, we're hoping that we can pass this legislation and hopefully put some guardrails around this. We're just looking for these operators to be good neighbors, and I'll pursue it at the state level, too, and that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, and Councilman, the, you could have a Baltimore County legislation as long as you have another county join in. So I assume Montgomery or, I don't know where the counties have them, and if they're having problems, they might be interested in a bill concerning the two counties or three counties. You just put in a bill that is restricted to Baltimore County only. So, so, so when you talk to, you know, I'm shocked at the problems you're talking about, and it seems to me that, you know, I support your bill absolutely, but I think maybe we need some state intervention and more powers to put an end to this. Again, I'm shocked. I had no idea they've turned into party venues that are getting out of control. So thank you for putting the bill in.
Absolutely. Montgomery County, actually, you brought up Montgomery County, they actually passed legislation there that was similar to this to deal with the same, same kind of issues that we're having here in Baltimore County.
Do you know how it's working?
Good question, and that, we'll definitely look into that. I believe that it has made the situation better there. And I, and I think, I think frankly, in Baltimore County, I don't know that the level of activity at the hookah lounges was anticipated. I think, I think initially, they were, they were thought of more as like, almost like a cigar shop where there would be, you know, a limited number of people kind of smoking in a, in a, you know, a venet room, and what they've become is really a BYOB nightclub, often where they're breaking fire code violations, you know, all kinds of things.
So the, you've spoken with the Towson Precinct, and as you said, they've explained...
All my precincts, actually, and...
Okay. Okay.
Towson, we have two, in part, in White Marsh, we have two, we have two in Parkville. Unfortunately, they haven't all been problems, but of the, I think, six or seven I have, four or five have been problems at any given time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Randall?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman, I wouldn't apologize for your lengthy introduction. I think it was very thorough. Your work on this is obviously very thorough, and certainly, I certainly support your bill. I'm glad you brought up cigar shops, because I want to make sure there's a distinction between a cigar shop, cigar lounge, and what we're talking about here. Is there a legal distinction?
There is...
I just don't want to place an undue regulatory or permitting burden on business that...
Right. Mr. Secretary, can you...
Are good neighbors.
Yes, they are definitely separate. In fact, the only change we made to the definition of vapor lounge and hookah lounge was we took out the portion in those definitions from 10 years ago that dealt, that addressed the time that Mr. Ortell alluded to, the time that they are permitted to be open, and we transferred that into the meat of the bill. So the definition of hookah lounge and vapor lounge substantively is unchanged, and it is, it is separate from cigar.
Right. Now, I'll probably get in trouble for this, but you walk into a cigar lounge, you're bound to run into a Baltimore County police officer, off-duty, if you know what I mean. Not so much in a hookah lounge, I don't think.
Okay. Any more? Councilman Jones?
Councilman Ortell, thank you. I guess I had a question about the premises of the buildings, where the definition of the premises includes any structures, okay, and off-street parking. Are we going to require the owners of the hookah lounges to police in effect the off-street parking?
No, but one of the, one of the thought processes we had was that often these, or at least some of the ones that I have in the sixth district are directly either in locations where they don't have enough parking, and it's precipitating parking in the neighborhoods because they only have a limited, and I, and I think they were designed originally like a cigar lounge where, you know, you might have 10, 15 patrons, and what we're getting is hundreds of patrons. You know, they're, they're often 200, 300 people in the club, and it's, they're over fire code anyway, but the fire department doesn't seem to want to, it's, the fire department has the same issue that the code enforcement people do, is that fire marshals are out all day, eight to five. They don't, they don't seem to have a mechanism to deal with these kind of issues at night unless we specifically flag them. But no, we're not expecting them to deal with off-street parking, but we're also hoping that in the future, we can locate these, these businesses more in an appropriate place where they have enough parking, where they're not parking in the neighborhoods.
Right. The only reason I bring it up, because I'm sensitive to asking the business owner to police like the off-street parking.
Yeah.
And the reason I bring it up is because in my district, you know, we had a business where, you know, they provided adequate security coming into their building, and they warned everybody to make sure nobody had a weapon. But then one day, there was a fight in the parking lot, and the security guard went out into the parking lot where it is not a controlled environment, and at the end of the day, the security guard ended up being shot and killed. And, you know, it begged the question, you know, was the security guard, should he have been in the parking lot trying to break up a fight? Because, like I said, inside the building, they warn everybody, make sure nobody bring a weapon inside. Outside of the building...
Yeah, and Councilman Jones, I, at least two of the ones that I have, they actually have security that are in the parking lot as well. Now, off-street is, you know, or I guess, I guess going into neighborhoods is a different story, but a lot of them do have visible security on their lots because they're having, sometimes what they get are people that come and they're either tailgating before or after going into the actual building, and they're, they're trying to minimize those kind of situations where people are actually partying at their cars.
Okay.
But we're not, I don't, I don't, I don't think the bill requests that they must provide that, does it?
Right.
That they have to have security in their parking lots. I think just security cameras or...
Correct. It's, it's, since it's part of their property, the curtilage or, you know, whatever you want to call it, it's still under their control. Once, once, from a legal standpoint, once someone is on their property, whether they're in the parking area or inside, they're, they're considered an invitee, and technically, the establishment is responsible.
Any more comments?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Boswick, does that conclude our, our business for today? One more?
More bill, Mr. Chairman, sponsored by Councilman Randall?
I apologize. I apologize. Councilman Randall?
Oh, before we get to that, though, I just wanted to add one other thing. So in reviewing the Mr. Ortell's Bill 99, we asked Mr. Ortell's aide, one of his aides, to, you know, put together kind of a collage of their complaints, of their email complaints that they had received and some of the phone calls and documentation, so, to put in the meeting file. So we have that compiled, as well as the spreadsheet that Mr. Ortell alluded to from the police precinct. So we will be making that part of the meeting file. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 124 concerns our regulations regarding converting a boarding house to apartments. Currently, there is no legal mechanism in Baltimore County to convert a boarding house into apartments. This bill would establish that. It would establish it only in the Dundalk National Historic District. As I said in the first, first reading, there is a boarding house in that National Historic District that has been around for decades and is no longer appropriate for the community or just appropriate for just modern lifestyles. I do want to let my colleagues know that the Old Dundalk Neighborhood Association has engaged the property owner and supports the bill.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Is that the final bit of business?
Yes, sir.
With that, I'd like to, on behalf of the Baltimore County Council, wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving weekend. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good work, Chair.
Thank you.